Hey, good evening, everyone. It's now time to start. We're at seven oh five, so I'd like to start the meeting of the North Fair Oaks Community Council.
Commencing your call out. Vice Chair George Sagan. Councilmember Juan Carlos Bravo. Councilmember Everardo Rodriguez. Councilmember Niket Cersei.
Present.
Councilmember Brooks Esser.
Here.
Councilmember Blair Whitney.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly Gracie. Chair Kathleen Daly.
Present. Thank you.
Brief announcement, we do have an interpreter joining us this evening. The person who will be joining, if you would like to listen to the meeting in Spanish. Please, please, that's provided by the table. Our interpreter will please present those in Spanish. We will now move on to public comments. If you'd like to make a public comment, please bring your speaker slip up to the floor. Do you have any public comments?
Yes, we have one. I'd like to call Gabriela Valencia. For a public comment, you will have two minutes to speak.
Good evening. My name is Gabriela Valencia and I have lived in North Fair Oaks for almost thirty years. I'm here to request the council help to create, to replace several trees that are missing on Middlefield Road between Ninth Avenue and Fifth Avenue. I also ask the council to formally inquire about the type of care the county provides these trees in this section of Middlefield Road. This would also be a good time to inquire about the plan to care for the new trees on the newly renovated section of Middlefield Road. The trees in the older portion of Middlefield Road between Ninth Avenue and Fifth Avenue were planted about twenty years ago, or perhaps even longer than that. But most have been kept very small and do not provide much needed treatment. Over the years, I have witnessed how some of these trees have been horribly chopped off, not pruned, but chopped off where only the tree trunk is left. There is one business close to Middlefield, on the corner of Middlefield Road and Fifth Avenue, where they have piñatas hanging outside. There are several trees missing outside that business. And I think it would be good to have the appropriate county department speak with the business owner to find out why all the trees outside that business disappeared. So that when new trees are planted, an effort can be made to keep those trees alive. There may also be a need for increased awareness among all business owners about the importance of caring for the trees and not chopping them off, as it's been done with some trees in the past. I ask the council members to please discuss this issue at a future meeting so that the missing trees on Middlefield Road between Ninth Avenue and Fifth Avenue can be replaced soon. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Just a quick announcement. So we got a written public comment and we will share that with the council members at the end of the meeting.
Sorry about that. Okay, so we're going ahead and move on to agenda item number one. We have a presentation by nonprofit Generations United. Keith Miller, the Director of Operations, who is going to be presenting. Vanessa Upfront. And Angie, I'm sorry.
We'll give you your presentation and you just tell us when to go next, okay?
Good evening. It's really an honor for us to be here to be able to talk a little bit about who we are, what we do, what we've been doing for seventeen years. Thank you for having us. Generations United was founded in two thousand and seven. Seventeen years of service. Want me to be closer to the microphone? I can do that. I talk pretty loud, so. We're excited about the opportunity that we have, any time to share about the work that we do. A lot of times, when you're involved in nonprofit work, it can be pretty thankless and harder than anyone could ever imagine, especially if you're working with a community that is really wrestling and struggling with all the changes that have happened. And we all know that things have changed dramatically in SoCon Valley. If you would like to see these pictures up close, I did bring our impact report, which has these pictures. But this represents so many of the things that we do. And it's a testament to a community that really desires to gather and fellowship together and stay here in this beautiful North Fair Oaks that has been their home for many years. Next slide. Our mission is to empower the children and families of Redwood City and North Fair Oaks to reach their full potential. We do this in this generation and the next. We were very specific about naming our organization. We wanted it to be something that visually people could see that we're looking to unite the generation. So it's an exciting thing when we see intergenerational relationships established between community members and families and children in North Fair Oaks. Next slide. We were founded in two thousand and seven. About twenty years ago, I was in a room with a number of wonderful people from Redwood City. We were talking about one of the greatest concerns of the school district at the time was the reading levels of our students, especially our low-income students. Community organizations came together and we met and we decided, let's do a collaboration. We collaborated with the Redwood City Library, with the Police Department, with Parks and Rec, with local churches. And we created a model where we could spend time with children after school and give them an opportunity to get ahead in their reading. I did that over at Hoover School when we launched. And that was really kind of the genesis of the start of Generations United in the Redwood City area. Redwood City Reads was the genesis of us making a decision to embrace an idea that the children within our community deserved a shot at learning, at understanding what was happening in the classroom. Many of these children would come to school by the time they were five or four and they spoke Spanish at home. When you speak Spanish at home and you show up at school, it's a little bit difficult to be sitting in a classroom with twenty-five or thirty students and not really knowing what the teacher's saying. In many cases, these teachers are doing the best thing they can do. It's a big ticket. So what has happened over the course, next slide, of a number of years is we have built a team. It's an amazing team of people who truly care about our community. And we built a collaborative work with lots of different entities. Some of these entities that I've worked with are no longer here. People like Sandra Portasio, who was part of the Community School Initiative. People like Chris Bet, who ran our Parks and Recs Department. These are wonderful individuals who we started this out with. About four years ago, we moved into an academic enrichment center on Second and Bay, right next door to Thucanyan Esquina. It's a great spot. Please come by and see us. We're going to be there for a little bit longer, but we'd love for you to stop by. But initially, we were actually housed on school campuses. We were at the North Fair Oaks School before it closed. I was on that campus for ten years in two classrooms with Josh Griffin. And we watched the school close and it was heartbreaking and horrible for our community. We were over at John Gill School. We were over at Shaver Library. Derek Wolfgram and Chris Bet designed a model that would allow us to use the library over at Shaver. So we had children over from the community at Roosevelt School and we taught them after school. So we've seen the full gamut of lots of fun things with children. Hundreds of children have been a part of our programming and we're very excited about that. What is so exciting, next slide, for us is being around this long. Guess what? We get to see some of the students who've aged out of our program graduate. I don't think I've cried more tears than watching students that we used to read with when they were five graduate from Sequoia and Woodson and Everest. And the beauty of that is these seniors now have an opportunity to work with us and they're actually, they're interns. We pay them and they know exactly what we do. And they know exactly what is expected of the children that come into our program. It's a beautiful thing because then they develop a skill that they might not get unless they were allowed to work within a nonprofit. We love that. We offer dance and music. Some of you might know Lata Ceres, Dance Colibrí, which is now called, oh, next screen, sorry, Colibrí Rojo. And we teach music and dance. It's a beautiful thing to watch kids who live in trailers learn how to play the violin and learn how to play the harana and to dance on these beautiful events that we have. This event happened to be over at Peninsula Covenant Church where they danced before hundreds of people on a Sunday. You can find us out in Second Bay on Friday nights and on Sundays doing that. We also host events. So there's the after-school initiative. There is, next screen, the opportunity that we have because the parents are with us five days a week picking up the children. We also get to offer them services. Those services include ESL, include computer skills. We partner with people, like Street Code Academy, who helps teach a number of students and families how to use a computer. So our Mother's Day celebration, we've had it for the past couple of years over on the Stanford campus. We posted out there. It's our biggest, one of our biggest events. We bring out mariachi, we bring out dancing, there's balloons, there's all kinds of stuff. And we honor the mothers. We have partnerships where people give us stuff, makeup, and we like makeup. They give us different things that we can, clothing that we can hand out to these families. We do an Easter egg hunt every year and we do cultural celebrations, including Thanksgiving and Christmas. Thanksgiving is a beautiful thing. We actually hosted here and people bring their wonderful meals. We get turkey, cranberry sauce, mashed potatoes, and tamales, pupusas, and all the other facens from the families that come. It's a beautiful thing when people can come together and work together and have dignity as they present their gifts as part of this family. We also offer summer camp. We just wrapped up our summer camp last week. Next screen, please. Next, summer camp was the next one. There we go. We tried to do summer camp eight weeks. It's a little hard to do that because staffing is hard unless we partner with another organization. We're a small organization, truly, there's nine of us. And three of those are interns, three of those are full-time staff, three of those are part-time staff. But we have volunteers who have been a part of our story. Next slide. These volunteers come from everywhere, but most of them are people, just community members, who truly have a desire to be a part of doing something great in the community. We have one volunteer who's been with us for ten years. She drives up and down from Emerald Hills down to North Fair Oaks four days a week. It's almost her full-time job. And it's delightful because when COVID hit, she ended up going to the homes of these families. And in the homes, she sat out in the backyard and continued to teach them. She is their grandmother, where many children will not experience a relationship with their grandmother or grandfather. That's what she gets to do. It's a beautiful thing to behold. She's in the bottom left-hand corner. We also have volunteers from corporate organizations. We have a friend, top-left corner, who's from Stanford. He's been reading with our sweet Camperon for ten years. They've developed a relationship. He's married off three girls, has three grandkids, but he's still every week coming in and spending time with students. When we moved into our, I'm going to state volunteers, when we moved into our facility in North Fair Oaks, we also get our volunteers to come and help us refurbish everything. We are a place where people can come and get their hands dirty by helping. Our community members, for example, built the fence in the front of our facility. We could have hired somebody else. We could have spent a lot more money, but they wanted to be a part. And then when the children come, they go, ah, the puppy, he made that fence. Right, Alexander? Yeah. So Alexander's one of our students. Thank you. Gracias Elena. And yeah, it's a beautiful thing when we can rally together to do something good for the community. We do that by empowering children and families' educational options. The next slide, please. One of the things that we found ourselves in is in providing emergency assistance. How many remember? We had a flood a couple of years ago in Bay Shore. We had family members who were carrying their children to their van so that they could take them to school. We rally our donor base, we rally our volunteers, we rally the community, and we do the work together. It's a beautiful thing when that happens. We saw ourselves through COVID, through a global pandemic. Our children still learned, our families still had food. We provided meals as we partnered with Facebook and a church. And we provide, we took the meals to families' homes. There wasn't this long line of cars to pick up food. We took the food to the families with our strong volunteer base. Just a few months ago, we had a fire, which all of you are very keenly aware about. We were in this room just a month ago and we had a very large gathering. And how that happened was we happened to hear that some of these backyards were singed and burned. What are we supposed to do about that? We started making phone calls really early to find out what happened and who was helping these families. We rallied with so many people who came out, the county of San Mateo. We partnered with Redwood City Together, with El Concilio and the Fair Oaks Community Center. I just went around and took flowers to everybody who helped us because it was just a beautiful thing to see everyone coming together. And we didn't fix the problem, but at least we had communication and dialogue around caring for people. Our North Fair Oaks community so desperately needs to know that they have a voice, that they're seen, that they're heard. And we believe that's why people kind of hang out with us, is we see them, we know them, we know their names, we know their stories, we know their pain, and we try to find ways to work together. Next slide, Will G. Keating. Thank you.
Thank you, Angie. I'd like to talk with you about a program that we started four years ago that's come close to my heart. And that is to support the businesses here. In the last four years, we've done classes for business owners who want to grow their business or entrepreneurs. And we've also helped them through the pandemic and then also after the pandemic in applying for grants to help their businesses. And in the four years, we've actually put $500,000 in grants, not directly through GU, but facilitating it by assisting these businesses. And so we're very happy about that, that we can help these businesses and communities. Next slide. So here, this is because somebody had asked for some statistics on people that we serve. We program participants, if a person signs up for two programs, that number would be reflected twice here, about nineteen hundred different program participants, but unique persons, about eight hundred and fifty. As Angie mentioned, we have three full-time staff, three part-time staff, three interns. We have hundreds of volunteers, probably two hundred plus at last count. We have many partners, partnerships with other community-based organizations. And our budget's around $600,000 for those people. Next slide. I am here to talk with you about gentrification. And this slide, I'm not going to go through, it kind of defines gentrification. There's some excellent resources in the footnotes on this page. If you would like a copy of this, we'd be happy to send it to you. But gentrification is real. And bottom line is it's a change in the makeup of a community. We are experiencing that here in North Fair Oaks. And you can go online or go to this definition about what that really is. Next slide. Now, there are, a lot of people consider gentrification exclusively negative. It's not. There are some positives. Most recent research from places like the Brookings Institute shows that there are some positive benefits. We want to talk about the things that are impacting the North Fair Oaks community, specifically loss of affordable housing, socioeconomic disparities, cultural erosion, loss of small businesses, reduced diversity. The, when we, when gentrification happens, these things get diminished. They're important. North Fair Oaks is an important community, it's a vibrant community, and it's changing. Not all of those changes are good. Now, I want to be clear, in our opinion, that gentrification can't be stopped. You can't stop progress from happening by itself. However, there are some things we're going to talk about on the upcoming slides about gentrification and how we can make that benefit the community. Next slide. In specific, we became aware of this and started to work in community activism around this because of this. This is the blue and yellow block here is at the corner of Second and Bay. Road across the top is Bay, Second Street down the right-hand side, Barron down the left-hand side. Recently, in December, Stanford, through a development company, bought eight parcels. The two in yellow are Redwood City, the six in blue are North Fair Oaks. Now, why is that a concern? Well, first of all, it's a concern because Stanford, thirteen years ago, signed a development agreement with the city of Redwood City to develop thirty-five acres across the other side of Bay. They're now coming on this side of Bay. That's a challenge. And the reason it's a challenge is this from our standpoint. When a developer comes in, it could be Stanford or anyone else. When a developer comes in and wants to do some type of development, and in this case, all of these businesses are going to be torn down. The building that we're in is going to be torn down, we have to relocate. That's the reference that Angie made earlier. When that occurs, if the development is within the zoning plan and within the North Fair Oaks plan, no community veterans or exactions can be required. They're not allowed to be by state law. The planning departments, the city councils, or the county supervisors cannot require that the developer pony up money for the veteran in the community. They're not allowed to do that. In this case, on the yellow spots, which are Redwood City parcels, Stanford intends to build one life science building. On the blue sections, they intend to build two life sciences buildings together. Collectively, it'll be somewhere between 500 and 600,000 square feet. Because it is within plan, it's very beautiful, I'm sure, just like the rest of the Redwood City campus. Three- and four-story glass-and-street buildings. I'm sure it'll be decorated nicely with trees. But when they do that, because this is part of plan, because it's within plan, neither the county nor the city can require Stanford for any money for what they're taking from the community. So let's recap. Stanford, or through their developers, coming in and they're taking land away from the community. They are displacing minority-owned businesses, they're displacing a nonprofit organization that's served the community for seventeen years. And now during this transition, we cannot provide services because of this displacement. They are taking from the community. The challenge with Stanford particularly is that they're a nonprofit. Therefore, they're not paying any property taxes. That's a challenge because they're not giving anything back to the community. So, Generations United, next slide. We have worked with Stanford, talked to Stanford, many people, anybody we can get to at Stanford, to say, hey, optically, this isn't great. You're coming into the community, but if the Redwood City campus is any indication, you're not really being involved in the community, invested in the community. You're just there and you took land from the community, you're not really invested. We said, optically, that's not good. Allow us, Generations United, to guide you through this process because we have proximity and longevity in the community. Allow us to guide you through this process on how you can be a better corporate partner with the community. Here are some of the things that we've asked. They have a beautiful pool right across the street from Copeland. We ask for safe swim classes for our children so that brown-skinned kids don't drown and they learn how to at least get to the side of the pool. We ask for workday parking for teachers to keep it connected. We ask for access to fitness classes for moms. We have, because they have a beautiful fitness center that is extremely light and views. They have, they have many available rooms, meeting rooms. We ask for that for classes and meetings. We ask for assistance to, for childcare vouchers for working moms if they have openings in their childcare center. We have been rebuffed and are returning. We are now starting to let people in the community know this. We've been working quietly for six months to get Stanford to come to the table and say, be a good community partner, allow access. These are low-cost things. We even shared with them some high-cost things that they can do. That, that was summarily dismissed. So here's, here's where we are with this. We publicly call out Stanford to be a proactive partner with other community-based, or with GU and other community-based organizations. We're going to ask them for at least this. They're building life sciences building, they're going to have to have lab techs. Work in that life sciences building to do the experiments and work that they're going to be doing through grants and so on, through the NIAH. We need a job training program for NFO residents. Why don't you go outside and bring in people? Let's train the people who are here so that we can create really good jobs, so people can stay in the community. Tech position, which will be needed in the new life sciences building. We're calling all, have them out also to be a better community partner and allow access in their surplus for access to these other buildings. Next slide. We also have a call of action to the NFO Community Council to help manage this process. We're not going to eliminate gentrification, but to help manage it, here's how. We would like the council to endorse a conceptual framework for businesses and developers to pay into some type of NFO veteran fund. The name's not important, but there needs to be money from developers to come back to the community so that people who are still living here, or the businesses that are displaced, can benefit. We're going to request that the Sam, we would request that the council asks the San Mateo County supervisors to direct staff to research and recommend options for how to generate revenue. That could be through development fees and transfer tax or some other mechanism. We don't have a recommendation on that. We'd like them to research and come back with a recommendation on how to generate fees and money. And then for the council to develop a high, a list of highest priorities for the NFO so that when funds do become available, San Mateo County will have those recommendations already in hand and they can go ahead and make those expenditures. Excellent. This is a QR code for Angie, who's the founder and executive director of Generations United. If you would like a copy of the slide deck, you can click on that QR. We will send it to ask, ask that her contact information. Just send us a note, we'll send you the slide deck. We will send it to ask, ask, that's her contact information. Just send us a note. We'll send you the slide deck with the graphics, all the information. I wanted to take, if there's any remaining time, to just answer the question.
Questions from the council members? Yeah, yeah, council members first. Get started? Questions? Again, any questions from any? Go ahead.
Thank you both for coming to present a really interesting presentation and also impressive numbers of the community members that have been serving. Thank you both for your service. Thank you very much. We know there's a great need and certainly you are filling, you know, one of the gaps that we have in the community. Thank you. You mentioned that you had been talking to Stanford before about several board ones that you, including, you know, access to the pool and fitness classes, et cetera. So did that negotiation end yet or is still ongoing or what's the status of that?
Oh, that's a great question. Where we are today, they have only, they have offered to help Generations United find another location. We're not concerned about Generations United. We're really concerned for the community. The fact that we're on that corner, the fact that we're being displaced allows us to have a conversation around gentrification with them. We have, just this morning, started to let key people in the community, Latino leaders specifically First and, and Latino leaders at Stanford know about this. It's our belief that many people who are in positions of authority don't know. Because Stanford is a monst, is a, excuse me, it's a very big organization. I was going to say monster. That's too narrow. They, it's a very big organization. Because of that, it's impossible for many parts of Stanford to know what's happening across other areas. And so we want to let them know that. It's our hope that people with the authority and who have compassion and hearts will say, oh, we do get this. Okay, let's sit down and talk about it. The people that we've met with, including some BP's at Stanford, so far have not had the authority or not had the compassion. We're looking for two of us to be together in the same place so that they can say, oh, we get it. We are impacting the community. Let's try to be a better community citizen. So that letter just went out this morning, actually. Great question. And we hope that that will bring some people back to the table. If it doesn't, we will go broader. We will go out to the next concentric circle. And at some point, if we have no, no traction with them, we will go public to the broader public through media. You don't want to do that. We would rather than, and part of it is that Generations United is a partner of Stanford. They have allowed us to hold some events on their, on their outside field. They've allowed us to use a parking lot for an event. We have, we see, we partnered with the Office of Child Health Equity with Stanford Medicine to do some listening groups in the, in the community, which is held and very, very positive. And so we believe that we're a good partner and good stand here. So our goal has been to say, this is not good, what's happening here. And we're asking you to make it right to the community. And again, many of those things that we've suggested to them require very little direct expense. Allowing kids to learn how to save swim, even if it's at 10 o'clock on Saturday night or 6 o'clock on a Sunday morning, if that's when the pool is available, we don't care. We just want access. And so those are the kinds of things that we're going. So to answer your question, we're starting here. And we will move out if necessary to let more people know about it until we get something.
Thank you.
Thanks again. A really good presentation. Had a couple of questions for clarification again. First part is, one of you were asking on the slide to endorse a betterment fund. Now, earlier you mentioned that there's no legal obligation. So what was, is there a plan or something around that to advocate to the county or the state level to change that?
Yes. So it doesn't matter what the fund is called, but the fund should be here to help increase dollars for low income housing. What about more parks? We have very few parks here in North Fair Oaks. I don't know what the priorities are, and I don't want to suggest. This group with others can determine what that is. I am suggesting that if the neighborhood is going to be chewed up through gentrification, that it may be slightly more expensive for these developers to do that and that those funds come to make it better for everybody who's remaining. So that fund would be the vehicle to do that. And the funding mechanism, we would rely on the county to recommend what that should be.
And, and you probably don't know this one, or if you do, that's great. My understanding is developers, when there's a leak, they usually have to account for housing, especially with a lot of the properties that stay in front. Maybe something, I mean, we have to look into a little bit more, but.
It depends on what the zoning is and what they're trying to accomplish with the development. So if it's a, if it's a mixed use, they would have to have some.
And then, just to follow up, I think to Evra's question, when you were engaging with Stanford, I was just looking on their site. Are you talking with that Office of Community Engagement? They have a whole group there that you can always follow.
Uh, we do, we do. And Pal, I'm going to let Angie take that.
My prior life, I was in sales and I don't know very well. I had exhausted myself. Reaching out to various departments. The people that we're working with are not decision-makers. They're not the people who are thinking about medical routes. They're the people who enforce the decisions that are being made at a much higher level. If I could get to Condoleezza Rice, I would. If I could get to the president, I would. I'd come this close to driving over there and doing that. But we need to understand a couple of things. And I've exhausted myself talking to the people that, we do have advocates at Stanford. Marvelous people, medical people who listened to our community when they said, you've got a building in my backyard and I can't go there. My kids, I can't take them to Coyote Point because they don't know how to swim. I don't know how to swim. So we have presented all of this many times to probably 19 people. They've referred us to the Office of Government Affairs. We've spoken to almost the highest level there, and I think that's where we got the concession of not having to pay rent for five months. So we have endeavored to get to the right people without going public, if you will.
Thank you very much. And again, I work in corporate, so I fully understand that getting the decision makers with the people on the ground is not always connected and trying to make that case and understand. And to clarify, have they given any reason of why they're not willing to engage, other than it's just not a priority for them?
That's such a great question. Only because, I'll say it this way. One of our first meetings when we took this challenge on was with a high-ranking individual in North Fair Oaks. And we asked them, what's it like working with Stanford? One word: bad. And we said, hmm, I'm the eternal optimist. I thought for sure there would be a way. Every single person we've spoken to at Stanford has the same rote answer. It's no. But what about this community who's living in mobile trailer parks, who have eight people in a one-bedroom apartment? You've got this beautiful facility that's half-empty. Give us access. It's just, ultimately, it's wrong, is what it is. And I'm willing to say that. And I will say it until they take me away from 895 Second Avenue with the bulldozer and front of the building. It's wrong. And so some of the words I've heard from people is, we can do this alone. And the answer to that is, that's true. But you can't do it with, either with an organization who's unwilling to talk to you about the community, about listening, about caring, and about our future. These families are providing amazing work to all of us. And we, they deserve to be listened to. So we're not making much headway with them, otherwise. Yeah. So here's what I'll say is, I think part of the biggest challenge for us as an organization is that we are on that point. Being on that corner gives us leverage, or we probably would have been out of there by now. What happens when we go away at the end of September? Then who speaks on behalf of my friends? I don't know. There are many beautiful organizations right here on Middlefield. People keep trying to get us on the Middlefield. It's a great place. But there's also community way on the other end that families can't walk to, where there are 800 children on a campus in all that radius. Who's going to stand for them? That's very concerning to my heart. That's why we've asked them to give us access. But it seems pretty easy to me.
Thank you so much, Angie, for, it is so rare, your compassion and care and concern for this community. I would say, your ask is probably a little too small. It's, I looked up, oh, you're sitting here, 124 billion there. And you're asking for access to the pool. Like, that just feels like small potatoes. But my question for you is, what is your ask of this council directly? What can we do to help support you in this David and Goliath fight?
You are the fifth person to return to this David and Goliath, because that's what it is. And interestingly enough, I'm a person of faith, which is why we're not backing down. I'll say that how you can support us is by helping us, helping us find a place. We do not, we're in a very unique time in Silicon Valley. Redwood City is actually now the hardest Silicon Valley. I remember when it was called Deadwood City. I remember distinctly. So there's a lot of eyes here. It's very critical that we raise awareness of the plight of the poor, the plight of the under-resourced families, and find a way to rally, whether it's businesses. Keith was being very humble. He didn't share that he brought in half a million dollars on this Middlefield road when they had COVID dollars available. The Tucadilla where we rent out from, he's been there 25 years. And it's sad to me that they'll just throw in the towel like everybody else does. Why not support his business? Why not order your meeting? It's not going to, it's not going to change everything, but I think, I think Keith is on to something when he talks about finding ways to change the system. We're not fighting people, we're fighting systems.
For council members' comments? Okay, then I'd like to make a few. First of all, Angie, the work that you do. I know you serve the Kip and Clancya program. I've seen some of the students over at your space. And it's a wonderful place to go after school. It is needed. I do some substitute work. Teaching work at the Kip, I think it's 800, it's 900 students. And you sort of watch them leave every single day. You kind of wonder where they go and what after-school programs are available. So to have that available to them is super important. I will also like to say that I live and I walk Bay Road. I try to walk every day, but, okay, I don't walk every day, but I do walk that area a lot. Today, I took a picture. There were 500 parking spaces available in their stacked parking lot. And at least half of the spots on the ground were empty. We actually went and I actually had a conversation with Stanford, knowing that North Fair Oaks has some parking challenges with the teachers from Kip, who get some of the other commercial vehicles. If we did a program that included placards so that we knew who was going to be parking in there, we could just, no. Could you help maybe fund a parking lot? No. What, what can you do? Don't know. So it's a very disappointing conversation to ask Stanford for help there. The pool, it's absolutely empty. The gym is empty most of the time. So there is something, what Angie and Keith are asking for, it's very obvious. And all you have to do is take a ride around the campus and, and yes, a big, huge, chrome, beautiful building is going to be right there. And right behind it is low-income housing. And so that doesn't feel good. If you know, you're going to look at that every single day. It doesn't feel good for the families that have to look up, probably lose their sun or sunsetting or, or outdoor air and things like that. So we do need, as a council, we do need to keep an eye on what Stanford is doing and how it impacts North Fair Oaks. Because even if it's a strange carve out at Bay Road and how it got to spring in Second, I'm still researching, trying to figure it out, can't understand it. But there is an interesting carve-out, which Stanford got Redwood City on their side, but North Fair Oaks is just kind of, oh, they're off to the side, but not really encroaching on them. But what Angie and Keith are saying, it is true. They are in approach, they are going to approach on our community. And we need to keep an eye on it. Support the families and the people around it. How? I don't know. But they're, what they're saying is very, very true. Like, literally 500 parking spaces today. And it's midweek. And that happens all the time. And so, you know, when we ask for something and it's no, 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 then it is time for us to take a second look. My comment. Just please.
Good evening, everybody. Justin Maes, Steptany County Executive. It's been a little while since I've sat with this council. Couldn't see you all, see some of you faces as well. I just wanted to add a quick comment to what Angie is saying. Stanford is historically very difficult to work with. Santa Clara and San Mateo County have been challenging them on some of their development plans and their impact to our communities. And I will say to you, even, well, maybe we're not applying to Goliath, even Goliath, first of Goliath, Stanford is very difficult to work with and to get them to change their plans. But I'd be happy to talk with you and Keith about that, what you're doing and see if there's ways that the county can futureize.
I appreciate that so much. I do want to kind of circle back on your question. I think that finding ways to collaborate with others to, you know, Pal's got their big, beautiful center on 10th and Bucurral has theirs over here. And we're all doing, there's enough families for all of us to be doing this. But if you know of anyone, I literally knocked on the door of a gentleman who owns lots of empty buildings in North Fair Oaks. But he's got to make money too. So we could really use extra sets of eyes and ears to look out for opportunities where we can find a new place to work with our community. So extra eyes and ears are always helpful. And if you just want to come and hold my hand, I'll be okay with that. Walked down Spring Street today and looked.
Walked down Spring Street today and looked at properties that are in the areas.
Thank you.
Are any, um, members, the public? Like to comment on this agenda item?
We do, we do. I want to call Gabrielle. I thought I'd call Gabrielle Valencia.
Thank you Angie.
Thank you very much Angie and Keith and everyone at Generations United for the wonderful work that you do. I know many families that benefit from the services that you offer. So, thank you, thank you. Um, I, I want to share, uh, with all of you that may not know about, you know, what has been happening, not just now. I think it's good to put things into context. Nine years ago, about nine years ago, I was part of the Middlefield Road with the Science Steering Committee. That's when there were talks about doing the work that was just finished. That was about nine years ago. And along with several, uh, other members of the North Bar Oaks community, we met for several months. And we raised this issue of gentrification many, many, many times. And Mike Hallagie, who used to attend those meetings, and he used to attend these meetings too at that time. Um, he is aware of all the issues that we raised since that time. Um, at that time, those of us that were part of the steering committee were very concerned that once Middlefield Road work would be completed, the gentrification in this neighborhood would increase. And the community displacement that has been going on for many years would actually worsen. And at the time, we had meetings, and that included meetings with supervisors spoken. One of the meetings happened at the Far Oaks School, it was a huge attendance there. We also met here, and, um, we, uh, we made it very, very clear that those of us in the steering committee were very concerned about it. Um, unfortunately, um, we kept being told that that was not the time or the issue to address uh, by the county, because they were just working on the road. And our job as community members was to vote on options. But of course, we could see what could happen, right? And so, I think it's very unfortunate that it's happening now. And I share this background with you because I think it's important to put things into context. And I think it's really important to unite and help those that are, um, being impacted the most. And I'm glad that Angie and Keith gave us some pointers on how we can help. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to call Elena Valencia. Ruby, can you also come up with a personal? Thank you.
See.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Elena Valencia. Este, estaba escuchando lo de Stanford, de los parqueaderos de la iglesia. Todo es importante. Pero, Elena Valencia.
My name is Elena Valencia. And I'd like to talk about parking on the Central.
Ah, de los parqueaderos, este, ahí está cerca, este, una, este, iglesia que se llama Virgo. Y que a mí llega de mucho personal, pero la gente siempre anda ahí, este, buscando parqueadero en la calle. Y luego, cuando se parquean ahí, tienen que irlo a mover pronto porque no hay parqueadero.
And those by here is the church called Virgo, and there's a lot of people go and park there, but they have to move it very quickly.
Entonces, este, teniendo la oportunidad de que ahí tienen los parqueaderos, los tengan de por gusto, fuera bueno que tomaran la opción, quieran esos parqueaderos para que las mamás que andan con sus niños no anden sufriendo en la calle buscando parqueadero.
So, it would be really nice to be able to have access to have a parking. Because a lot of parents, mothers with their children have to be working badly all around the park. The present institution.
Mero de enfrente de donde están esos parqueaderos que aquí están pidiendo, está esa iglesia que diga mucho personal, y yo he mirado cómo batalla la gente con un parqueadero.
Same church that I was talking about and Angie talked about, I see a lot of parents battling parking.
Este, también quería hablar de los, de la vez pasada que hice comentario también. Necesitamos el staff que me dice sobre la Cancher y la Ferros. Y también, este, que si se pudiera hacer un túmulo en la calle Cancher.
Cancher. Yeah, and then I spoke about a stop sign that I requested Hampshire and, and Barocks.
Porque tenemos el problema ahí en la calle, este, Ferros, este, y la Cancher, que los carros pasan bien rápido, y pues ahí esta la escuela.
Um, that's street Hampshire and Barocks, the cars go very fast.
Gracias.
Thank you.
I'll call for a comment. Back to you.
Um, then go ahead and move on to, um, then the main question. That is the Department of Public Works, um, talking about the Middlefield Road update.
My name is Marcelo. Director of Public Works. Um, I do, that's involved in the projects, so I'll be giving you guys an update on the status of the last several months.
There's been a request. We're running a little late on time, so keep coming.
Excellent. Uh, so if you guys know the limits, uh, we're doing a street state project, uh, Avenue two fifth, and there's also some undergrounding of utilities that, uh, proper Avenue six, and as part of that, we're also replacing seven seven sewer lines. Excellent. Uh, project included a lot of street state developments, uh, there was a road diet piece where we changed the direction from four lanes, uh, four one, two, three, one direction with a turn lane. As part of that, we created sidewalks, bicycle improvements, uh, street amenities, benches, trash cans, bike racks, and then also installed green infrastructure and tree canopy. And then ultimately, we are gonna be undergrounding the overhead wires. As far as the phases, uh, happy to report that we are complete with the majority of the work. There's still a couple of minor items that we're working through, but as far as the contractor, all of that has been worked is done. We're working on much of the side, I'm just, signs, uh, clicking, uh, uh, the, uh, green infrastructure, things like that. There were ten phases in the overall project. This kind of shows the configuration and the phasing. Uh, southbound, maybe. Yeah, well, southbound. This shows some of the pictures since the last updates. We were trying to work along concerns and so, I mean, that happened early November, so, I'm scared. Excellent. Another big challenge for us, and something that took a significant amount of time, was crossing the railroad. So, this is the Community Pacific Railroad, it's right in front of that health clinic. We ended up installing a joint trench underneath that, so you can see they actually drill a hole right under the railroad. It's about twenty-two thousand, and through there, we pull up all our utilities, like the sewer, and we can show you. And they put the conduits together in this kind of Lego set, and then this goes inside the conduits and under the railroad, and then bolted with wires. So. We also did some work from the health clinic. One of them was the relocation of fire hydrant. Uh, was needed because we're also reconfiguring the driveway there as a result of the installation of a railway presser. And then also the strike. So, we got some significant checking improvements. Worked to install the bike head features. As you can see now, there's still the, and the buffer, bike lanes installed, current corridor. Crossings at intersections as well as, uh, flashing signals, which we call RRFs. Excellent. Just show some of the crossings at intersections, so it showed Fifth Avenue. Another intersection that I, I don't know right now, but you can see some of the crossings that we installed, some high visibility crossings. Excellent, please. Again, just some of the striking stuff that were upgraded. This also includes a striking for the bus stop. We also included several street amenities, specific bike racks to help with public shift of travel. Uh, green infrastructure, which is a state requirement that helps treat like stormwater, so we should help. Spirits and milk herbs, I was gonna need to know, it's really flat, there used to be some, some bonding at some of the intersections. A lot of this should help out with that, it's bonding. It's not meant for all the flooding, but some of the smaller storms, like the two, five year storms, we should, um, they as well as some greening of the area. So, there's several trees installed in this section of the project. Uh, there was a question earlier about tree maintenance, so we did install a irrigation system as part of our work. So, we are gonna be irrigating the trees for this segment, and the other segment. Happy to have discussions about that. Excellent. And then some decorative benches. I think, uh, this is part of the community outreach process, it's a decorative for design. It's a monarch butterfly, which I understand is a butterfly from a lot of regions of Mexico, there are a lot of people in the area that live. And so, these are located right outside Second Avenue, it's on the front side. Excellent. So, we just still have some remaining work, but they just being the undergrounding utilities. That's being led by PG. Fortunately, they are similarly difficult to work with, uh, entities that we've talked about previously. Uh, we have been engaging with them, but they are the lead on the undergrounding. Right now, they're estimating it's gonna take about three, four months for all of the overhead lines to come down. So, it goes in a phased approach, but PG, now pulling their wires first, and then the rest of the stones, like Comcast, uh, AT&amp;T, uh, we have Ray, fiber, and then electric driver. Once those are pulled, then they start topping the poles, and we'll see those start kind of getting smaller and smaller, and then pull. We also have some work that, uh, we're with the health clinic. So, we've been working with that and getting to them. That should happen, uh, after all the utility work that's completed. That'll be done by RR. That's gonna require a reconfiguration of that traffic, so you actually installed arms connecting those traffic. So, basically. We also have driveway reconfiguration on Pacific. And once everything is pulled, there's gonna be some minor sidewalk patching and restoration, as well as, uh, there's a couple of trees that will be placed, that's currently, they're teaching them lots of the way. And then finally, we'll also be installing some holiday lights on the trees, uh, but we don't wanna do that pretty true. All of it, so once we are closer to getting power. And then I do want to take some time to talk about the traffic control process, so I speaking, so, it's getting up an hour. Adding the stop signs, but we do have stop signs in one of the book. So, we do have a process that we go through toward the technical request. That information is available on this website. It's led through our traffic, which is our great department. Uh, there's also some educational information there, that explains the process and some of the challenges and things like that with the, installing stop signs. And, uh, once a stop sign request is submitted, our traffic team goes through that process. We're not, so. As far as the stop signs on the field, so we're talking to our traffic engineer. The main purpose of stop signs is to assist with the right-of-way intersections, so just help people understand that that's what happens, right, if we put them to the right way. And so, those with those kind of movements, uh, they are not effective to control speed, so just wanted to hear. Uh, when we are doing construction, we have stop signs at any simple intersection, and that was more of a safety related issue we took. There's one instruction workers, people weren't necessarily walking sidewalks that are meant for the good way. And so, that's the reason we install stop signs to construction things. They don't really, or they aren't intended to stop, help with speed. They actually have opposite effect, because if there's too many stop signs, people try to catch up. So, they'll accelerate out of a stop sign, right, to get back to that left. Um, excessive use of stop signs can also kind of reach, see them, there's a bunch of stop signs that that will stop, as it seems to be. Uh, and so, we don't wanna have that situation. And then there's also a possibility that they false sense of security, uh, pedestrians. It stops like people are gonna stop. Stuff like that, so. There is a false sense of security, which is some safety issues. So. Then, so, we go through a process called a stop sign warrant. So, those are used to determine whether a stop sign is, is false. So, we analyze a bunch of things when the warrant comes in. A number of vehicles at the intersections, we take a look at the volumes, the accident history. See what kind of vehicular, extra conflicts there are. We'll see if there's any challenges with visibility that would be the way we do, especially the stop sign. Check to see whether the site, situation of the vehicles and pedestrians. Uh, what the uses of the stop sign, whether there's, uh, vulnerable populations, of children, of queer disabled. Uh, whether we need to control that traffic conflict, so that's definitely a conflict that's shown to have more accidents. So, if there's an area with situations like that, it's not stop signs. And then other unusual places. So, you know, this is following California. Manual and beautiful traffic control devices, which is a solid plan, that's on a lot of our traffic, which you're in touch with. Excellent. And so, for the Middlefield Road, a stop sign warrant is to be conducted. Um, but we wanna wait until the traffic patterns normalize on the middlefield road, and part of that is gonna traffic signal at Pacific, so that we're capable. So, you can see the photo here on the right of what that signal looks like now. Unfortunately, we're not able to operate it yet, it's a power issue and having to interconnect with railroad. So, we wanna make sure that all of the work that was part of the Middlefield project is installed, is operational, and then let me see what the traffic, actually. During the design, we did have a traffic study, with all the traffic flows and determination was adding this. Traffic signal was going to, not only the middle crossing, but also the flow. So, once everything's installed, it's about six months for the traffic products to normalize. And at that point, we came to the stop sign requirement. There's also guidance in the FUTCD that says that traffic or stop signs shouldn't be controlled at intersection with other trawls. So, right now, we have a rectangular rapid flashing base. And those were installed at every intersection that crosses Middlefield, so Dunbarton Avenue, Second Avenue, and Fourth Avenue. And it's not recommended, uh, a stop sign and an RRFP, so it's either one or the other. And so, at this point, um, our plan is to not do any kind of stop sign installation along the field till we're able to finish the project, see what the traffic flows on, and at that point. Excellent. Uh, as always, we have information on our project website. Chat to us through the email address or phone number. And then we also have our, uh, Office of Community Affairs that's available for any other related questions. Excellent. So, I think that's your answer to any questions you guys have.
Hey, any questions from council members?
I do have a couple of questions. Thank you, Christopher, for your presentation. Do have a couple of questions, just trying to inform you. Right, but I guess, um, So last uh last meeting, um there was several problems uh related to um. The need of stop signs. Um because I think people are still um. Basing their um. Their perception of the middlefield road with an older middlefield road. And perhaps it is not. And thank you for the clarification. Perhaps it is not um stop signs that are needed. But um perhaps better uh pedestrian signs. Because in the past, um the um. The pedestrian crossings had the flashing lights across the road. And right now, we only have the pedestrian signs on the opposite ends of uh the curve. Which often are difficult to see uh by motorists, myself included. Um and I think maybe maybe people's perception of pedestrian safety is is, you know. Is kind of being um attributed to the lack of stop signs, you know, for that whole stretch from Fifth Avenue to. To Pacific. Um so I wonder if. If the um if the. If the complete lights across the road. Tend to be more expensive or uh more elaborate um compared to the ones that we have uh implemented right now.
Yeah, in terms of cost, I. We'd have to look at that. I mean, I don't. Answer uh. I will say a lot of jurisdictions are moving away some of the ground lights and moving more towards the RRFPs or sometimes you see the larger like hot ones on a, you know. Really wouldn't be appropriate for the middlefield because then you're going. Treats. I think the biggest piece that will affect this is just letting the traffic patterns normalize. I don't think people realize that the. Signals are out there. And we we drove it. And we're gonna take a closer look at the side of the RRFPs and see what happens in terms of shifting those to make them better. Visibly aligned. But I know there's one location where we have to. Due to a conflict. So we're gonna look to see what we can do that. The head a little bit closer to the middlefield road. The rest of them, I believe, were installed or. From the regulation that the FUTCD. And so again, I think if people use the corridor and realize that these things are out there, they're gonna start the. Also, people are gonna start. Realizing the benefits of the road diet and kind of the narrow lanes and start driving a little bit slower over the next couple of months as they get used to the traffic patterns. So again, in in the traffic world, it's really a lot of. You go through a lot of effort during the design phase, and then it's kind of a wait and see portion until you see how how work relaxes. And so again, six months is the typical time it takes for people to normalize their operations after the project is installed. And so at that point, I think we have a better indication of effectiveness of all these things and whether.
Yeah. Um my second question um is regarding the um. The comparison between, for example, the signs that you see on the Camino Real that are lights, you know, that glow red and amber. So is there uh is there a ratio um for the number of pedestrians in one specific area? Or is it only considered uh. Due to the number of lanes on the road?
We talked about when the large, like the hog system gets installed.
Right, yeah, like what is what is the.
Yeah, I'd have to say I I don't have. An answer right now. We'd have to take a look to see. There's typically criteria requirements of when. Like an RRFP, which is on Middlefield, is installed versus a road bus system like the hog system is installed. Typically, I think it's gonna be related to volume of traffic and number of lengths. But I can take a.
Yeah, that'd be great. Because I think in in our case here, no ferrocks. And the the concern is that it's a um. Uh the number of pedestrians you have, you know, is is just extremely high. So it would not be compared even to an area, you know, uh along the Camino Real. Uh we just have more pedestrian traffic um on the middlefield road, even if we have two on this. But anyway, my final comment um is uh in regards to um last. Uh meeting, uh council meeting, excuse me, council meeting where um a few residents um. Uh gave public comment based on the concern they have merging onto. When they're coming off the the streets, uh particularly the ones that are, you know, um. They would say connectors, you know, like for example, Second Avenue is is a good um example because it goes all the way down to um. I think it's uh Spring, you know, um and and so that's a heavily traffic. Uh road. And I think a lot of people are so.
So uh it's something I uh love your optimism. I think the speed will come down, but we'll we'll go with it. Um. It's been very nice. Uh one of the things I I guess two comments I have. One is. Uh have we accounted for visibility with ours parked there and blocking the RRFPs on that? Because. I know legit people can't think that there if larger trucks are something that you better see.
Yeah, typically the those citing requirements for the FUTCD, it's based on kind of the parking configuration.
Um and then the other question I had was, is there going to be any looking at the timing of lights at the Middlefield?
Once uh.
I was just gonna say, uh one thing I noticed is because of the timing. Uh the Middlefield heading south tends to get backed up. And then there's because of a lot of traffic all the way up to second or third. And then I start seeing people. Turn off or jump around, try and go down uh community streets and things like that to get around the traffic.
Yeah, once once we have the other traffic signal installed, we'll take a look at the timing of both of them and. modify that timing to make sure it works the best for the traffic flows. And we have the ability to change the tactic. They're also activated by the detection.
I I think the problem is it's just a very high volume intersection. And so every direction.
I think the head of what Councilmember Rodriguez had to say with regard to second, given that it isn't through the street, you'll have people trying to get on to Middlefield, both. Going north and going south in both directions on second. So it really be worth. Be worth a look. Obviously, we want to establish traffic patterns first. I suspect that'll that'll be top of the list. Um do you have a start date for PG and even to start pulling the lines? I mean, we talked about Stan through the railroad thing that we're with, I suspect.
Yeah. It is. We don't have a start date right now. Uh or we have periodic meetings in time to check in at. They're working through some issues that Charlie. That they just for some reason can't get through. But. We've been following up weekly to ask them to. Start, but I don't want to start.
We got the supervisor involved in that. Letting him know that it's kind of holding up the full utilization of all this great work we've done.
Yeah, we we've engaged with the CEO's office, uh but we.
Last question, and it's a small one. There was the issue with Maldonado's where they had lost R D and Sam Trans who moved their bus stop and that sort of thing. Is that? Has that been resolved yet? Or are we still trying to figure?
We're working through it. Um we're continuing to meet with Sam Trans to see what options we have to us. Uh so we have. Something to continue those discussions.
Followed up with the same transport meeting in a weekly stream. Thanks so much for stopping.
This is more of a question for the council since I was unable to join last month, but. In terms of usage, do people understand how to use the center lane to merge onto Middlefield when they're turning from the nectors? Or is the assumption that they have to come from and go straight into the traffic line?
I guess it's it's hard to tell. There wasn't much uh clarification in term in terms of how people were trying to merge um onto Middlefield Road. Um but there were, you know, there were a couple of comments um saying that um. Particularly during rush hour, morning and afternoon, I don't know, around, you know, the end of school or something like that. Um it's really difficult for people who live, you know, um eh in the back in the back streets to merge onto Middlefield Road because cars never stop. So it's not and it's not only one side that you have to watch, we work, have to watch. It's always like when there's no stop sign, there could be a continuous, you know, traffic jam. Um where, you know, uh unless you uh, you know. Just literally push your car, you know, in the middle of traffic, uh people are not necessarily going to stop to navigate. I mean, some people do, but.
Yeah, again, I was mostly just wondering if they know that they're supposed to turn into the middle lane if they're like that. And I didn't. Totally understand that we'll have to wait for the timing on both sides to help create traffic breaks. Yeah. That needs to be a factor.
They didn't specify, but even, you know, even I'm thinking that even if you just wanted to get on the. If the traffic is not stopped.
Right. And I think partly because we don't have a traffic that wants civic yet to create a great traffic to allow that to. Understand.
Kelly, anything? Um, couple things. Um I do want to um just point out that there were some great people that participated last week. And um their comments, um I don't have unfortunately their names, but I just want to make a public shout out. And I was glad that they did come to the meeting and speak. Um and this is not, please, a reflection on DPW. You guys, perfect storm with Middlefield Road. I get it. It's not a complaint. But this idea of things needing to settle really bothers me. Like, what does settling mean? Um when the light's done at Pacific, then we look at it. Could it just be that maybe the study that you guys did got it wrong? Because I I sat with um the owner of Connoisseur out front and I watched about every sixth. Seventh car run the stop run the stop sign in front of him. Right now, there is nothing between Fifth and his his site. So from Fifth on to Connoisseur, which is right at Pacific. There's nothing to control on the speed whatsoever. I don't know that I. I struggle a little bit with saying that stop signs are ineffective in speed control, but something has to make people think. I mean, did you guys? Did anyone here know that a stop sign doesn't help speed? I I'm struggling to try to understand that, that. You know, you have to slow down. You have to do something or you're gonna run it. I parked it uh um uh Castle Circula, crossed over to go to the county office. Watched a guy stop as I was on this side and run, pass through on the other side. If I wouldn't have been paying attention, he would have been on my phone. Boom. So I'm really struggling. Bay Road, Broadway, Spring, Fair Oaks, all get stop signs at second. They're they've been there forever. And apparently, um they were never there on Middlefield. And then you guys brought them in and you did the work. And then took them away because they weren't part of the plan. Even um the um sheriffs told me they were shocked when the stop signs. So waiting for what is what I'm struggling with, waiting until, God, I don't want something bad. We have kids coming back to school. We've got some um summit. We've got kids going to Castle the Circula. I don't think. Waiting to get things to settle. I need someone to explain what waiting for things to settle means because. Like, and also too, stop signs will make you look and see that, oh, hey, I didn't know that taco shop was there. Oh, hey, I didn't know that they sold. Insurance there, something like that. So it does actually benefit the businesses to make people slow down. Middlefield Road, I live on Fair Oaks, they are raceways. So just because we have nice crosswalks. I know we're trying to be get people out of their cars and build walkable communities and things like that, bicyclists, but. We have Middlefield Road. It's one of the most well-trafficked roads. In North, it's in, if it's not within North Fair Oaks, all of North Fair Oaks. So please, it's not a criticism, but I just can't make any sense of this. Idea of things settling in order to. Move forward on doing something a little bit better and stopping that flow from Fifth to the. Something's gone. It's not just. It's not just. And I'm on Middlefield Road almost every day and I'm constantly creeping up, hoping no one's gonna run second. Um but the second and fourth stop signs were a good deal. I think they worked for the for the community and I'm just terrified that us waiting for things to settle. Doesn't, it just doesn't. I'm sorry, it doesn't work for me. And it's not a criticism, please, not a criticism. No, it's just, I need someone to better explain. Then. And I've done my research and I know that you have to do studies and all of that, but I just think we're taking huge risks. Ready, okay? Once again, please.
Thank you.
Do um I'd like to call Gabriella Valencia.
Good evening, again. Um I. I travel on Middlefield Road every day and I walk every day. Just this span of this week. I have gone to walking from my home on Edison Way to businesses on the other side of Middlefield Road. Four times this week. And I can assure you that the cars sometimes don't see the flashing lights. I have missed them too when I drive. So it's a reality that we live here every day. I know that there are statistics, but the reality should trump statistics because we see it every day. And um. I came last month to speak about this topic and I'm here again asking uh all of you for your support uh to install this. Uh I think that two stop signs on Middlefield Road would be great. Um last month, as Kathleen mentioned, many community members came to speak on this issue. And I asked that you please remember that those comments um and take them into consideration, please. All the community members that spoke on this issue last month supported the idea. And thought there was a need for additional stop signs. And and this stretch between Fifth Avenue and Pacific Avenue is too long to not have any stop signs. And I often uh notice the cars speeding up quite a bit. And sometimes uh drivers. I've witnessed it when I'm driving and I've witnessed it when I'm the one crossing the street. They don't stop for the pedestrians when the uh crossing lights are flashing. And um and I have witnessed myself as a driver that I cannot see the flashing lights sometimes. And so I don't fault them. But at the same time, you know, we have to do whatever is necessary to keep the street safe. Um during traffic uh times as a driver. To get off. Middlefield Road and to get on Middlefield Road. And it's not a lack of knowledge of not knowing how to take the middle lane. It's because the traffic is slowly so fast, it becomes very difficult because it's just. Oncoming all the time. So please help us. Thank you.
We do have a comment on Zoom. Um when I call your name, I will unmute your mic and you'll be there in minutes. Um you may begin to speak anytime.
Hi, can you guys hear me? Hello? So I'm Panita Rankinett. I'm a student at Stanford University and I've been working in North Fair Oaks this summer. So I usually drive down Middlefield Road, but when I like walked it or and especially the first time I walked it. It was really hot that day and I noticed that like that street in particular is really hard, really hot. And when you compare like some portions of that road um versus like an area like Atherton or like even if you're walking along like. Downtown Palo Alto, which I know is like far away, but it's what I'm used to. I realized even on days when it's around the same temperature. There aren't as many trees on Middlefield Road, so it just feels a lot hotter. And then I am, there are some trees on the road, but in some areas it's a little sparse. Or the trees are kind of small, like especially in the area that's like in front of that store with all the piñatas hanging outside or between Ninth and Fifth. Um and there's also like, I noticed spots which um that are built for trees that don't really have them in it. So I just want to support. I've heard. So I just want to support, I've heard other people say that they want more trees in this area before. I just wanted to like, if we're talking about, um, work on Middlefield Road, support the idea that you guys like plant more trees or like take a look at what's already there and kind of see like, um, I guess like they could be a bit bigger. Thank you.
Last call, comment?
Back to you. Okay, um, no other comments, um, move on to item number three.
Um, yeah, you will be presenting this, or?
All right, um, we are gonna be talking about an update on tree removal, new tree ordinance. So go ahead and let, uh, Barat get started on his presentation.
Uh, thank you so much, uh, if you give me a minute, I'll just set up, uh, our presentation before we can start. So, uh, if you can bear with me. Do let me know that you're seeing our presentation screen and not something else.
We can see it, thank you.
All right, so. Uh, good evening, uh, council members, my name is Bharat Singh, I'm the Planning Services Manager for the county. Uh, I have the opportu- opportunity tonight to present the significant effort by the department uh, on rehauling the county's ordinance on the protection, removal and uh, management of free permits and the regulations for, uh, yeah, communities and in unincorporated county. Uh, this effort has, uh, been, um, on for a significant amount of time, much before, uh, I joined, uh, the county and I get the opportunity here to sort of take it through the last steps of, uh, getting a recommendation from the planning commission and board approval. Um. The presentation today has been prepared by our consultants, uh, Dudek and I will hand it over to them, the project manager, uh, Kevin Kalanen and, uh, arborist, Jared Davis. We also have the county, uh, uh, arborist who will also be providing, uh, some, um, uh, parts of this presentation, Natalie Krug. So with that, I'm gonna hand it over to, uh, Kevin.
Thanks, Bharat, uh, hopefully everyone can hear me okay. Um, so yeah, we are, um, talking about the ordinance update today. And so obviously it's a good place to start with why update the tree ordinance. So, you know, it started with community concerns about increased construction uh, that would be causing impacts to trees, you know, due to development and things like that. Um, there was a need to consolidate the two, uh, current ordinances, which there's a significant tree ordinance and a heritage tree ordinance. We wanted to consolidate those into one single coherent ordinance. Um, we needed a clear process for tree removal and trimming, both on the development and non-development side. We wanted, uh, equitable enforcement costs for unincorporated communities and we wanted to align the ordinance with other county environmental and development requirements. Um, you can go to the next slide. So we started the community engagement process in the spring of 2023. Um, obviously this community council was part of that, uh, community involvement process along with, uh, the former steering committee, the planning and code enforcement, uh, divisions of the county, some local arborists, developer TJ Holmes and Menlo Oaks. You can go to the next slide. And so the feedback that we heard is that there are a variety of landscapes within the county and those variety of landscapes call for different tree regulations. Um, we also heard that there was a need to clarify definitions. We heard from applicants, uh, that they expressed challenges with inconsistencies in the way that individual planners were interpreting the ordinance for tree permits. Um, we heard there was a need for resources for folks to, uh, be able to properly measure tree size, determine tree species and administer basic tree care. Uh, there was a need to sanitize, uh, a new arborist report template and we, uh, heard a need to evaluate replacement, tree replacement requirements and, uh, in, in Luffy, in the case where, uh, a tree, uh, replant is not possible on the property. And to get into more of the details, I'm gonna pass it on to my colleague Jared.
Thanks, Kevin. Uh, hi, everyone, this is Jared, I'm an arborist with Dudek. Um, and I'm here to present you with some of the changes, the major changes that we made um, in the formation of this updated ordinance. Um, the first major change is that more and more trees are going to be protected. The previous ordinance had any tree, uh, greater than thirty-eight inches, um, protected. Now, all trees greater than twelve inches diameter are protected. Um, this diameter is measured at standard height, which is an arboricultural term. Um, it's four and a half feet above grade. So all trees greater than twelve inches diameter at standard height are now, uh, protected as well as that, um, heritage trees are protected, mitigation trees, so those trees that are planted, um, as permit conditions, communities of trees and protected indigenous trees, of which I'll tell you more about on the next slide. So, um, what you see on the right of this slide right here is a condensed version of the protected indigenous trees. There are a few more, um, indigenous trees than are listed here, but we wanted to fit it into the slide. You'll see that our hardwoods are protected at ten inches, so at a smaller, uh, size than other trees. And then, um, our, uh, excuse me, our conifers are protected at eighteen inches. Um, and when these are removed, uh, they should be replanted with the same species. Next slide, please. As well as tree removal permits, uh, pruning permits have been introduced. Um, so on these protected indigenous trees, branches that are greater than six inches in diameter are, um, require a permit to be pruned. And any size branch on an oak tree where the oak tree is greater than thirty inches in diameter at standard height, as well as pruning any heritage tree, those, these are all situations where a permit is now needed. Next slide, please. There are instances when a tree is removed and it's just not feasible to replace that with another tree. Um, instances include when there's a spacing requirement, maybe a tree was growing in a place that, um, just does not accommodate trees. Um, a permit is still required to remove such trees, um, but if replacement is not feasible, um, an in-lu fee of three thousand, three hundred forty-five dollars, um, is charged. This, this money goes to the county tree replacement fund that supports, um, urban forest activities throughout the county. And in this next slide, we'll show you just a quick, um, how our work was done on the in-lu fee. Um, we took in a variety of factors, um, including the price to purchase a, uh, twenty-four inch box tree. The effort it takes and the, the money it takes to put in the labor to plant a tree and establish it, establish it and get it to a place where it can survive on its own, which includes watering for several years, um, staking the tree, um, all that labor that goes into it as well as the first few years of pruning. And also in this last row, um, we accommodate the ecosystem services that, um, a tree may provide. And we've tried to quantify that. And that is how we got to our three thousand, three hundred forty-five dollar fee. Next slide, please. So required findings have changed. Um, one of, one major thing to note is that there are required findings for non-development and then there are additional required findings for tree removals associated with development. So the required findings for any tree removal include the fall, the left column, um, including the tree is diseased or declining, it's a hazard tree. Or maybe the removal of the tree creates improved growing conditions for another tree of higher value. Um, sometimes trees are causing damage to infrastructure such as pipes and sidewalks that might necessitate a removal if there's no other mitigation that can happen. And some other reasons as well. Um, the additional findings with development are that an existing tree plan and tree protection plan must be submitted. There must be proof that there's no feasible alternative building site. Um, and lastly, no more than fifty percent of the existing canopy is lost on the property with development. Next slide, please. Some other changes to the ordinance are the introduction of the expedited tree permit. This is a tree permit, um, for removing undesirable species, um, species such as invasive, um, Inca, Acacia and Atlantis. Um, a tree replacement table has been included as well. Um, so the replacement of a removed tree is dependent on the size of the tree that is removed. We've also updated the tree list, um, here you see, uh, the listed natives, um, that may be replanted, there is also, um, a list of non-natives that may be replanted. Um, but the great thing about this tree list is you can look at, um, at factors such as, uh, how much planting space do I have? Or what environment am I in? Am I in a wetland, a riparian area or oak woodland? Are overhead utilities above where the tree is going to be planted? And you can take these factors to kind of narrow down to maybe a couple of trees that you can plant. And for every situation, we tried to have several trees to choose from. Next slide, please. Uh, lastly, we developed a companion website to the ordinance. Um, and this is supposed to, um, ease the implementation of the ordinance for both on the county side and on, um, the applicant's side. Um, potentially the most useful part of this website is the interactive survey where um, a user can navigate through the website and answer a series of questions and the, the website can determine whether the user needs a permit and what kind of permit is needed. Um, additional resources on the website, um, include just basic resources for tree care like how to plant a tree, um, proper ways of pruning a tree. Um, there's also an arborist report template for, um, arborists who are providing these reports and submitting them to the county. This makes the county's job easier because every report is kind of in the same format. Um, and there's also a reason for why each tree, why trees are protected, what's, what's the big deal about these trees? So we, we try to justify that. Uh, next slide, please.
All right, so, uh, we are in the public comment period right now for the ordinance. It, uh, opened up on June twenty-third and is going to close at the end of the month here on July thirty-first. Um, we're taking comments right now, uh, for both of these community council meetings. Um, we've also received several public comments so far, which we're currently in the process of addressing. Um, definitely appreciate the feedback. Uh, and what we'll be doing is releasing, uh, or publishing a summary document with responses to these public comments on, uh, the county's project website and we'll be posting that ten days prior to the presentation to the planning commission, uh, for recommendation to the board. And, uh, for this next segment, we're gonna have, uh, Natalie just go over a few different scenarios for different tree permits.
Hi, I'm Natalie Krug, San Mateo County Arborist, my pronouns are she/her. Um, so for the first scenario, we have a residential property that has two Douglas fir trees or the owner, um, wishes to remove, um, one of which is ten inches diameter standard height and the other one is twenty-eight inches diameter standard height. Um, based on these size criterias, the ten-inch tree would be exempt from permitting because it is less than the eighteen-inch minimum criteria to require a permit. And the twenty-eight inch diam- uh, diameter tree would, uh, be, uh, required to, uh, obtain a permit prior to removal. And our second scenario, uh, tree removal application, which is not associated with development, on an, uh, an applicant would like to remove several trees, including ten Italian cypress averaging twelve inches diameter standard height. This would be a hedgerow along the property line. Uh, one California black oak, ten inches diameter standard height in the rear of the lot. An arborist report identified that it is declining in canopy, has fungal conchs at the base of the tree, um, is diseased. Um, and two glossy privet growing within five foot of the primary dwelling, um, deemed out of compliance with local fire district's defensible space regulations. Um, with our, uh, proposed ordinance, the ten Italian cypress would be exempt from permitting because they are, um, within, or would, 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 sorry, would, uh, would be required for, uh, to apply for an expedited permit, um, because they're within that list of seventeen species, um, which, which are subject to expedited permits. The California black oak would be required to obtain, uh, a protected indigenous permit. And the two glossy privates would be exempt due to defensible space exemption. And for the final scenario, we have removal associated with a homeowner, uh, home redevelopment on a wooded lot, uh, which is oak bay woodland. The canopy coverage is approximately sixty percent, uh, of, of, of the buildable area of the parcel and existing canopy gaps over the driveway and roof of the existing home. And the home is half the size of the current maximum allowable square footage. And so, um, the image on the left depicts, um, the property with the existing structures, tree canopy covering sixty percent of the car parcel. Um, the, the center, uh, image shows a, uh, development which extends, um, the structure out by, to, to reach that, uh, maximum buildable capacity but preserves more than fifty percent of the tree canopy on site. And the third, um, option would be an unacceptable, um, according to the ordinance where, yes, the structure is expanded so that the landowner can achieve their maximum buildable capacity, um, but they have failed to protect more than fifty percent of the tree canopy.
Thank you, Natalie, um, so with that, we are, at the end of our presentation, I just wanted to, uh, let the council know what our standard of schedule is at this point. Uh, as you can see, we're in the week of July twenty-second, we've, uh, made the presentations to the MCC and, uh, your council. Uh, we are hoping to take, uh, we, we'll be looking at all the comments and making any, um, updates or amendments, um, between now and hopefully in August, when we, uh, late August, when we hope to go to the planning commission for a recommendation. And, uh, after that, uh, if, uh, once we get a positive recommendation from them, we are hoping to go to the Board of Supervisors on October eighth, uh, to get, uh, to adopt, get an adoption for these, uh, updated recommendations. Um, though this is not, uh, subject to NFOs, uh, as such, but we do have to go to the Coastal Commission. So, uh, that'll all be figured out once we get, uh, the board to adopt, um, these new regulations. Then we will work out our schedule for the Coastal Commission. So with that, uh, we come to the end of our presentation. Uh, I would like to reiterate, uh, we have our website, which is called sanmateocountytrees.org. Uh, if you go on there, uh, you should be able to access a lot of good, uh, useful information. Um, and we hope to add more to it as we, uh, progress. Uh, there are some other things that we are also working on that would help us, um, further identify the location of protected trees, uh, so that, uh, we will uh, update the, the community at large, uh, when those, uh, uh, tools become active. Uh, you will see a newsletter or an email from us that lets you know that, uh, those, uh, other additional pieces have been added. So with that, if, uh, the council has any questions, we, we, the, our team is more than happy to take them on.
Uh, I just wanna say thank you very much, um, this has been a long.
Uh, I just want to say thank you very much. Um, this has been a long time coming, and I'm really glad to see a lot of the changes and the finalized version here uh as well. So uh kudos to you guys uh for getting there. Uh, I did have one question in terms of issues that we've been having recently with trees and the posting of notices. Um, are there guidelines in this for how a permit is posted on nearby property and to take back, keep back from public as well as the notification radius? Um, I know I had a couple of those questions uh earlier to you guys. Uh, not sure if those are going to be addressed or have been addressed yet.
Uh, we will be, we are basically in the mode of collecting all the uh comments so that once we have everything together, we will look at it um um altogether and then make any uh recommended updates after that. So yes, we have your comments and we will, once this meeting is done. So next week, we are going to sit down and go over all the comments that we've gotten. Uh, and then try to start to work towards uh any updates that would be needed um through there. The one thing that I, I would like to mention is uh there are certain expedited permits that we are allowing right now. And in some of those cases, um, you know, the extended notification and the time period to comment may not be there because of the nature of uh it being an expedited permit. However, uh, the regular permit uh process does requ- uh, you know, have all the um requirements as such that are there right now in terms of notification. I think uh off the top of my head, I think it's about um, three hundred feet uh in around. And a- as you had mentioned, you thought that i- it should be larger, so we will take that into consideration. Uh, when we are looking at all the comments that we get. So we've gotten a significant amount of comments. Um, and we need to make sure that we are looking at everything before we can make any changes.
Thank you much. And yeah, I just said about the expedited permit, and I'm glad we have um objective uh areas for those and where needed, and it seems pretty reasonable. I think the current is one hundred feet and I was requesting to at least three hundred if not farther, but okay. Thank you.
This is probably more of a comment than a question, but I, thank you so much. I know uh, Niket and I have worked with you guys on this, and this is really important, I think, for our community. But I'm curious, this is great for community owners and members and developers, but PG&E is exempt from all of these rules, and they recently have been sending letters to homeowners who have potty trees and have been cutting down significantly huge potters, even if the canopy doesn't even touch the holes because, and I've spoken to the tree removal specialists, and they've said it's just easier to cut them down than it is to come down and repair them and, and, and maintain them from year to year. So my question slash maybe comment is where are we holding PG&E and other government agencies like the right-of-way where they can come and chop off a branch and do so indiscriminately and not within good pruning standards? Um, I've had arborists come out and look at how they have done this on our street, and I'm just curious, like, where, where does this ordinance and protections fall for other external agencies?
Um, hi, Natalie Prue. Um, so with regard to the PG&E, um, they are unfortunately uh subject to um CP, uh, the California Public Utilities Commission's regulations. And their regulations provide rather broad um exemptions for clearances from utility lines. And um uh, the way that those regulations are worded, um municipalities and local jurisdictions don't really have much say in um when that work for compliance purposes can be done or how it's done. Um, and this is not just in San Mateo County. This is all across the state, all across the country, and other areas outside of CPUC regulations. Um, so, and, and arborists uh like myself and others find it very frustrating because there are, there could be some simple solutions to this, but um it's a very complicated answer. Um, with regard to pruning practices, um, the the, the ordinance does, or, or, our, um, our website will have recommendations um for um, say uh, the neighborhood arborist or, you know, a, a business that's, that's doing work in on community property, uh, property owners and um providing um resources and best management practices where they can get that information. Um, and even within our ordinance, there are um regulations within there that state that they, they need to follow best management practices for um the arboricultural industry. And so if those types of things aren't happening, um, then uh residents could um uh, contact the code enforcement department and issue uh or uh provide a notice that a violation has occurred, or inquiry about a violation to the ordinance.
Thank you so much for that, Natalie. Um, just a quick follow-up question on your last point. Um, are there repercussions for contractors that the county hires that have repeat offenses on bad pruning practices that do not meet arborist in standards?
So um, it, that's a difficult thing for the, the county to, to manage unfortunately because um, we don't have business licenses. And we don't necessarily know which contractors are working on each property. So um our ordinance is written in a way where uh, the, the resident is responsible for making sure that they're hiring contractors that are knowledgeable in those best management practices. And hopefully, um, it, i- it's my hope at least that uh by encouraging this and getting um, say, undereducated arborists more educated on proper pruning practices and removal techniques, that will have fewer and fewer of these instances. Um, but improper pruning will always end up happening because you know, gardeners will, people who, who know nothing about trees will, will sometimes take on uh homeowners' requests to, to prune something. And there, there's, there's no way that the, the county would be able to police that because we'd never know who that person is.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, good one. And I hope I'm not being too specific on this. We talked about protected tree removal, and um on page thirteen, it lists the type of structural damage that may be considered in a protected tree removal application, things like home foundation, detached barrages, that sort of thing. An architect obviously is required to come in and attest to that. I was wondering if the, the ordinance states um structures and improvements can be subject to that. I was wondering if that includes driveways as well?
So generally speaking, when we uh we, we consider uh damage, it's focused more on, on structures. Um, the reason for that is generally it's, it's much easier to replace a, a patch of asphalt or concrete um than it is to repair somebody's home.
I guess I was thinking in cases where the, the damage can be so bad, such as to limit access to the dwelling, something like that. I've, I've seen instances that certainly larger trees, things like redwoods that have actually created real hazard there, and was wondering if that might be considered as, as one of the things that could um that could be included under structures and improvements.
Um, it's something I guess that would need to be considered. Um.
I- in general, uh, the way that you look at threat to structures, as, as Natalie mentioned, structures is fairly well-defined in our code as uh something that is of a certain height and, and um, uh, certain aspects of habitability i- is also involved. So uh, when it's driveways and things like that, that they, that may not be considered. Again, if a, a driveway is getting so significantly uh, or paving is getting so significantly uh disrupted where it may make it inaccessible to get into the property, you know, that's a unique situation, which, you know, I think from a perspective of uh the applicant, uh, they can make an appeal. Uh, and that's something that, you know, the uh director can uh look at and, and be able to make a judgment call on that. But that uh, again, it would take a, a significant amount of damage to be, make that something that would be considered as um uh, uh, a threat to the proper, the value of the prop, the buildings in the property.
Okay, thank you very much.
Niket, go ahead.
Sorry, uh, two, two other quick uh questions in terms of things I was asking. So I know we talked about protected trees. Um, are only the trees on the list uh required for permits? Uh, or is it any tree over the size? I was a little bit confused when I was reading that uh slide.
Uh, yes, so it is uh any tree greater than twelve point one inches um is protected. There are um situations where some, some species of trees, which are defined um may qualify for an expedited uh permit. And for the prote- protected indigenous trees, um, there are additional prote- protections that go along with them. Um, such as the pruning permit. Um, there's also a uh regulation that they cannot be removed in sensitive habitat areas. So um, there's kind of like two leagues of protections. First, it's all trees greater than twelve point one inches. And then greater protections uh come for protected indigenous trees, which were listed um on that slide.
Thank you. Um, another, actually, I just realized there's another question I had. Um, second one, as you mentioned, code enforcement, is that also going to be off of the uh website that you're putting up right now? Or is that just informational? Is that a separate website if there's a?
Is code, yeah, code enforcement has its own webpage, and they manage, you know, pretty much any code violations. So they have a separate um
Got it.
page. And I think what we can do is if we have any reference to on the website to code enforcement or, or uh, we can link to that uh website. So we can certainly add that.
All right, really appreciate that. I think that would help as well. Um, and then that leads into my final question in terms of once this uh tru- ordinance is done and approved, is there any plans for outreach to inform the community that these are the changes that are happening, um, be aware of it, things like that? Um, especially since today a lot of people don't even know permits are required.
We can certainly uh make an effort. So uh we have a signup list uh of people who have signed up for information from the planning department. We'll certainly send that out. Uh, and uh, once uh it's approved from the board, I think it takes about thirty days before it, it gets um um, it, it can be applied. So during that period, we can certainly make an effort to uh do some outreach where we, we can put it up on um um bulletin boards or use the county's social media to try and put the word out.
Thank you.
It's from council members, I think we're done, so. Do not have any public comment, so, okay.
I'm sorry, we can't really hear if there was a question for us.
Oh, no, there's no public comment. Thank you very much for your presentation. I think we're, we're done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, move on to agenda number six. It's not gonna be five minutes, it's gonna be all of one minute. Um, we're excited to announce that there's going to be the first annual, we hope annual or than that, North Fair Oaks Car Show, Cars and Coffee on August eighteenth from ten to two. Um, family event. Um, we are going around to different car shows, going to the auto body shops along Middlefield, and trying to get um as much participation as we can. Um, we're, we're hoping that people with, with the fun cars will sign up. There's uh registration to do that. And um, we need council members to sign up and help me work the table and uh possibly maybe even help with serving some coffee and, and pastries, but um that's it. I'm gonna let move on because I just cheated in front of everyone. No, I didn't. I didn't. Report out, report out. That's, okay. Um, if there's any other questions about the event, hold on and start with um, report outs, um, Justin, I think, okay. Um, District Four, Josh?
Well, they go up there.
Um, sure, if you want to, yeah.
Yeah, I'll sit at the door.
Or grab a mic. Those are my mic up there.
Evening, council members. Yes, human. Uh, my name is Joshua Kispilian. I am the legislative aide for District Four. I'll be doing a report out of behalf of supervisor Watts, welcome today. Uh, starting with an old item, uh, the sheriffs are regarding parking in the middle of the road. Sheriffs will start to enforce two-hour parking in the, in the middle of the road, or starting August first. This and how, free parking in the area of the south. Now, some new items. The borders supervisors convened a special meeting this week to discuss presenting a November ballot measure allowing the development of law and housing units. That order across the county is permitted under Article thirty-four of the California State Constitution. There were no actions taken during the meeting. The board will reconvene on August sixth.
Thank you.
A little bit closer to you. Thank you. Um, so, um, no actions were taken during the meeting, and the board will reconvene on August sixth to discuss this further. Uh, public comments regarding this matter are welcome and encouraged. The details will be posted online at the county website. As uh Chair Bailey mentioned, there are several, some, several events happening in all of this in North Fair Oaks, and also uh some events at the county's house study. Uh, the county will be hosting an emergency practice day on Saturday, August thirty, uh, at the events that are in San Mateo. The sheriff's will be hosting a national night out event on Tuesday, August sixth, at the Second Avenue near New York parking lot in North Fair Oaks. And as previous to mention, um, Chair Bailey, at the same location, there will be a, a car show on Sunday, August eighteenth. And lastly, um, District Four, we are currently looking for an intern that can commit at least twenty hours a week. Uh, the deadline is July, it's August seventh, and a few one more information will be available to discuss that. That'll be it. Thank you.
And start then with any council member reports. Um, Blair, anything to report tonight? Niket?
Nothing for me.
What up? I'm sorry, ever, I'm sorry. No.
Thanks.
Ellie, anything to report? Yeah. Brooks?
Yeah.
Actually, at the um July ten meeting of the Sam Transport Board, the board approved five million dollars in regional measure three funds for a feasibility study for a Dumbarton busway, which would run along the current Dumbarton rail corridor. The study's going to include community outreach, developing alternatives to a dedicated bus lane, completing an environmental review and starting design work on the project. Study's going to run um late this year into twenty twenty-eight. Things go well, final design in twenty twenty-nine, and construction on that would start in twenty thirty, so. So pretty uh, pretty exciting opportunity there if all goes well. And obviously, funding for the project would be a question mark at this point, but money is set aside for the study. So that's, that's a pretty exciting start. Um, the other thing I just wanted to thank staff for this settlement tonight. I think this worked out really well. Thank all you guys.
Appreciate it.
Just wanna add one other comment to um Josh's report. And that is on National Night Out, the North Fair Oaks Community Council will have a table set up. And looking for any volunteers that want to help me work that table.
When, when is that?
Uh, August sixth.
Thank you.
Um, well, in the comments. Has taken motion to adjourn?
A public comment beginning.
What were you sharing that?
Email to you. Email to you. It'll be posted on the website. Thank you.
All right. Okay, any other thoughts then? Motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.